I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of a legal -- requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, one, the former Blacksburg High School property, two, the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of a specific officer, appointees, or employees of any public body, one, agency on aging, two, economic development authority, three, Parks and Rec Commission, four, the Planning Commission, five, Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Airport Authority, six, personnel. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
We're in a closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of a closed meeting?
Some.
Discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Certification of closing. Where the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery has convened a closed meeting pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our Board's word to you that we're only discussing things that we're supposed to be discussing in closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Before we go forward with the invocation, I would like to read a letter that has been approved that we will be sending to Mayor, the Mayor of Charlottesville, Mayor Singer, or excuse me, Signer, and in regards to the events that took place in Charlottesville. The letter states as follows: "We, the Montgomery County, Virginia Board of Supervisors, stand with you against the evil that was represented in the city of Charlottesville this past weekend during the Unite the Right rally held by white supremacists, the Ku Klux Klan, neo-Nazis, skinheads, and other associated hate groups. Our thoughts are with you, your fellow leaders and citizens. You all have done a great job managing what was an extremely tragic and unfortunate event, an event that was not of your making. Our Board feels that this is not about being a Republican or a Democrat, this is about being an American. We are encouraging everyone regardless of race, national origin, political affiliation to stand up and speak out against such unacceptable belief system that does not represent America. We stand with you in being a beacon of intolerance for such hate. We stand with you in calling what it is and making it clear that this is hatred and bigotry. This is domestic terrorism. It is not welcome in our communities or in America. We stand with you in speaking out against these hate groups and protecting the morals and values that make this melting pot of people and culture in America great. Please feel free to reach out to us during this tragic and unfortunate time if we may provide any assistance or support. Again, we will continue to keep you in our thoughts and prayers." As we observe a moment of silence, I would ask us to keep those folks in Charlottesville, especially those that were injured, those that lost a loved one, in our thoughts during our moment of silence, and then I would ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is public address. Is there anyone in the general public who would like to come address the Board on any Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. I don't believe that we have an addendum. The next item is new business, resolution supporting the amendment of Charter 638, Virginia Acts of Assembly relating to the New River Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Next item.
Can I apologize, Vicki and I look at each other at the same time. We realized that we left off the consent agenda on the agenda.
I guess at this point in time, I did not catch it either. Marty, I was.
We need to make a motion to add consent agenda.
Add consent agenda to the agenda. That's what I thought. We can do that after new business, Mr. Chair.
Well, it says a tab, but it's not on the.
It's not on the agenda.
On the agenda itself. So is there a motion to add?
Seven Eyes.
Any discussion? All right, this is a motion to add consent agenda to the agenda. There's a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Next item.
Can I apologize, Vicki and I look at each other at the same time. We realized that we left off the consent agenda on the agenda.
I guess at this point in time, I did not catch it either. Marty, I was.
We need to make a motion to add consent agenda.
Add consent agenda to the agenda. That's what I thought. We can do that after new business, Mr. Chair.
Well, it says a tab, but it's not on the.
It's not on the agenda.
On the agenda itself. So is there a motion to add?
Seven Eyes.
Any discussion? All right, this is a motion to add consent agenda to the agenda. There's a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Next item.
Can I apologize, Vicki and I look at each other at the same time. We realized that we left off the consent agenda on the agenda.
I guess at this point in time, I did not catch it either. Marty, I was.
We need to make a motion to add consent agenda.
Add consent agenda to the agenda. That's what I thought. We can do that after new business, Mr. Chair.
Well, it says a tab, but it's not on the.
It's not on the agenda.
On the agenda itself. So is there a motion to add?
Seven Eyes.
Any discussion? All right, this is a motion to add consent agenda to the agenda. There's a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
I think we were so excited when we had two items in new business. We just forgot the consent agenda. All right, now, I look to our county attorney, and where will we put consent agenda at this point in time?
Let's put it after new business.
Okay.
After new business.
Sorry about that.
No, hey, they're in perfect. I'll let y'all know.
I think we were in a vote voting on this one thing we got.
All right, so there was a vote on subject A. Subject B is school operating fund, or FY, or fiscal year 2017 year-end carryover money.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Is there anyone who has any questions?
And I wanted to share some information the superintendent provided me earlier that's in addition to the information you had in your tab. Give them a moment to look at that. The information shows projects through fiscal '16, '17, and the red X marks indicates the projects that they've completed, and the ones that aren't crossed out are projects still yet to accomplish, and the carryover that they're requesting will address perhaps a little bit of this list, but not, we've got a long way to go.
And may I ask, I know that the school, folks in the school, are they saying that all of this money will then be used for capital maintenance projects?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Appreciate it.
No, if you look in the letter requesting that the carryover will be returned to us, the $488,765, of that, $183,980 will be used to purchase two school buses. The remaining $304,000 is yet to be determined as to actually what it will be used for. The school board has not set the priority. However, if you look at the projects, the one thing I bring attention to is the bottom of the first page, which says 12 root projects still needed, $9.5 million. And so, we've got plenty of things to do.
And I'd ask that question, if you don't mind. Are you saying that that $304,785 is dedicated to capital maintenance projects?
Yes.
Okay, so the $183 is for the buses?
Correct.
And so that is where?
Okay, thank you. Right.
Does that spark other questions?
This instruction, is that to hire new people?
Yes, sir.
$492,812.
Instruction.
$492,812.
I think that's the carry, that's the line item that the carryover money is coming from. I think when you add up the total, that's the amount in that.
$492,812 is just.
So that where it's coming from, the $492?
The $492 is the, yeah, that's the Medicaid, Medicaid grants.
Yeah, that's the revenue that came in that you want to carry over to use for capital.
Right, that's a separate letter. Right, that is, that is separate from the actual, the capital pieces. You should, you should have two letters. One for the capital, and then one for the grants and Medicaid.
Right.
How much did you get on Medicaid?
When I look at the letter, and maybe I.
I think Mr. King's question was, is it for people? And it is not.
Is it for higher? I mean, it says instruction.
I'm sorry?
It says $492,812, instruction.
Yes, sir, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's for people. That just means that it's being spent on instructional items. For example, professional development for employees that are teachers, or in this case, special education teachers. In addition, it would be spent for materials and supplies.
I was just wondering if he's going to use that to hire new people?
No, sir.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying that, because when I saw instruction as well, I was thinking, is this going to be used to hire?
No, that's just the category. We have to break it out into those functions by state code, instruction, operations and maintenance, transportation, admin, health and attendance, and in those categories, instruction is, of course, you know, about 70% of our budget, is where all the teachers are. It also includes instructional supplies and materials, equipment, chromebooks and that kind of thing.
Does that spark other questions? I know we've kind of gone a little bit out of order, but does anyone have any other questions of the school staff?
When we don't, usually at this time of the year when we start putting money together at the school board, we hire new teachers if we should need to have them. So is any of this money going for?
No.
Hiring new teachers?
It is not. You said the two letters. The first piece, okay, I just want to make sure, because I only had one in front of me.
If you scroll down on your tabs, it's there.
The first one, Ms. King's, was the $492, which is grants and Medicaid. And to be quite honest with you, it's almost a formality, because the federal government gives us that money, and then the grants, those monies are given to us as well, and it's a formality. We have to, for some reason, ask you for money that's being given to us by the federal government, so, because it's the end of year.
Because you don't have.
Yeah, but then, that's why I separate, separate, I have two separate letters, because one, it is not really, it's carryover, it's not carryover, it's not really money that anyone has, it's not discretionary spending per se. The other letter is actually discretionary spending, which is where you have $488,000, and that's where we're purchasing two school buses, and then the remaining $304,000 will be for maintenance projects. That's a good question.
I do appreciate you replacing these buses.
Yes, sir.
I know a lot of schools has buses, got 200,000, 300,000 miles, and like last year, you heard several school divisions breaking down, taking kids home.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate that.
You know, we're working hard. We have to replace, replace eight to nine buses a year to keep us from having to buy several of them in one year. And so, we're working hard at that. We actually were able to buy a couple of fuel savings at the end of the year, that was nice. And then hopefully these two, and then hopefully two more that I'm hoping you all will help us out with, with you all's exceeded, I would say this one, Mr. Shepherd, exceeded, excess revenue per se.
Unallocated revenue.
Unallocated revenue, exactly.
And in talking with the staff, I think we'll be able, we'll have some of those numbers coming in right away, but it'll probably be the first meeting in September before we'll be able to vote on it.
That's right.
And that was when I was talking with the staff at Agenda Review this week. So we should be able to have that for us to vote on, the first meeting in September. We'll probably have those numbers towards the late August.
Okay. And Mr. Meadows made a statement, I want to be real clear, the projects that are x-ed out, some are almost done. They're real close. The backstop at Christiansburg High School, the weight room at East Mall, it's really nice, and it's almost finished. There's a couple of them that are almost completed, but not quite, so.
I know we kind of went out, is there other board members that have questions?
I have a question, and I don't know quite if it's something that's answerable, talking about buses again. I know that there's a transportation manager that analyzes all of the buses and capacity issues and things of that nature. Do we ever expand fleets if we notice that we've got buses that are running at full capacity, your kids standing up or in the aisles? Do we ever grow the fleet in any particular area?
Absolutely. In fact, I asked that question last week, but the question was, do we have any buses? We have too many kids on them, because, and we did have one bus, we put too many students on the bus. We might not add a bus, but we might distribute the kids to other buses as opposed to actually adding buses. And sometimes you don't know it. We had a neighborhood Blacksburg group this summer, and ended up with more kids in the bus than we expected this summer, yes.
How was the first week of school?
First week of school's been great.
Good.
It's been, it's been perfect.
My kids are so happy to be back. I think it's more about recess, or not recess, but lunch and friends.
Did you say you were happy?
I am super happy that they're back, because they go to bed at a reasonable hour now, so.
It's been great, it really has. It's been good. Mr. Shepherd, been a good few days for you?
It has. I could explain why, but I won't. I didn't work Wednesday mornings on the day I drove.
Okay, it's been great.
I had some vacation planned out of town, so.
Yes, sir, look forward to having you back.
I do have a question, and I know I'm going to be asked if anybody catches it in my district. So many people in my district are critical of the schools and how much money you spend. I noticed on the calendar, there are four days that there are K through eighth grade early releases, which means an extra route for the school bus that day, which equates to one full day of transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Just curious as to why that happened, or?
Absolutely.
And I don't, I know that there's a dollar amount attached to that, and I don't need to know that, but.
Absolutely. I'll tell you what happened. It happened because we cut 20 teachers from the middle school several years ago. When we cut 20 teachers, we had to go from a seven-period to a six-period day. Which then took away planning time for middle school teachers. And so, if you look at planning time for middle school teachers, and how the revenue was reduced in comparison to our high school teachers, we need to find more planning time for our middle school teachers. If we were to add, we need about 20 teachers added to middle schools to really make it function in a seven-period day, to actually get that time back. So we felt the best way to actually do that was to add that route. You pick up the middle school or so, the, basically, it's the earliest missile, same time for, at the same time as middle, as would be elementary years coming here. And so, we felt it was definitely worth it. It was, it costs a lot less than adding 20 teachers to add that one bus route. In fact, there's about a tenth of one teacher to add that bus route to that day. That's a good question, but I'll tell you what, you know, we have 20 teachers in the middle school. We're one of the only middle schools in the state of Virginia that has a six-period day. Most have seven periods, or they have a block system, which is eight periods, you know, in alternating days. And we looked at that this past year, and it costs, it cost us a lot of money. We would have to add a minimum of 14 to 15 teachers to go to that schedule. So, so to add 14, 15 teachers, which we knew we didn't have the money to do, we actually went and found ways to give teachers more time back to be able to plan for instruction. That was one way of doing it. It's pretty great. I respect all of that, so.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Does that spark any other additional questions?
Yep.
I'd just like to thank you for being here. If someone has to sometimes explain my votes, I wanted to be able to say what was the, or some of the items, and I greatly appreciate you having your, one, you being here, but also your staff.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. And tomorrow night, Christiansburg High School.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, a community meeting. We'd check off, if there was anyone to have any of you there. I appreciate it.
I'm planning on being there.
Where is it going to be? Is it going?
Also, at our next board meeting on August 28th, we will be recognizing those fire and rescue volunteers that have 40-plus years of service. If you recall, I guess it was about a year ago, we did recognition for some of our really longtime volunteers. This is the next phase, and it's 40-plus years, so that'll be at our meeting on August 28th. And then, lastly, I wanted to ask the board to check their calendars for Sunday, September 10th. It's the day after the first VT home football game. That Sunday afternoon around 3:00 or so, we would like to tentatively schedule the ceremony at the Meadow property to celebrate the transfer of that. And I wanted to put that date out there tonight, just to see if anybody had a conflict on that afternoon.
What's the date?
Sunday, September 10th. And we'd probably be looking at 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon, but it won't take too long, but we were really trying for August, but August, and I know September and October will be crazy too, so I'm trying hard to hit a date. Anybody have a know on that right now?
Looks good to me.
All right, we're going to...
Okay.
All right, we'll keep rolling forward with that, and publicly as we have more put together on that, but I just wanted to...
And if we could let the town of Blacksburg know as soon as possible, and their elected officials as well?
Absolutely. And that's all I have.
Well, next up, the supervisor demands.
For the dedication, also, the Parks and Rec Commission for the county would like to be made aware of the date when it's finalized. And two other very small things. I talked to several of you, and I may have even said it during a board report, that Bill Long is going to be giving us a update on progress towards, one, the green, the green award for the county, and then, two, also, the recycling program and facilities that are available here in this building. And I've touched base with him, and he has made, he has already made significant progress towards that, so I'm just letting you know, Chair Tuck, that he probably will be approaching you soon to ask to be put on a future agenda. And then, and I've pre-warned Craig about this too, that I was going to bring it up, the dog licensing fee. I know we're doing the fee study and the compensation study, and the dog licensing fee, and also the collection process of the dog licensing fee is something that's been brought to my attention by a citizen. One, the process is somewhat arduous, so I understand that this board does not make any kinds of decisions about how it's collected. But two, then, the fee is $3, which causes me to think that, you know, we might have some room there if we wanted to look at a dedicated funding stream for the animal shelter. I'm not sure how that would really work, but I did mention to Craig that I'd be bringing it up, it's just something for us to look at.
And I was going to ask, Marty, when you're looking at that, it seems like that fund goes for people whose livestock gets injured by animals. Is that, is that where part of that fund goes, or am I just thinking wrong?
Yeah, I think so, but I can check.
Where does it go?
General fund?
Does it go to animal looking?
Right, being an offset.
Okay.
So, I just think, you know, as we're looking at ways to fund the shelter and make it sustainable and self-sustaining, that looking at that fee might be a good place to at least discuss amongst ourselves. And that's it.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any report.
Don't even want to tell us about the Fedler's Commission?
I could, but we don't have that much time.
Okay.
That was great.
Supervisor Creed?
No report.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, I don't have a report. Well, I just want to ask a question. Will Dave Clark be here the next meeting and not this, since he's out of town and...
As far as I know, although he did say he...
I thought he said...
That's right. He did have a conflict at the next meeting, and he said he was going to have a written report to us, but he also said if there was anything on your mind this evening, that he'll be here for an NPO meeting Thursday, and would be glad to...
Take it to him, okay.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, a couple things. First, I want to thank Chair Tuck and the staff for getting everything together for the letter to go to Charlottesville. I think it's, you know, we have suffered a different kind of tragedy, but it was still a tragedy within our own community, and I really felt for the people of Charlottesville, as they expressed, you know, their feelings about their city and what had happened there, and where they would go from there. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and for the staff getting that all together so we can get it to the mayor and the council in Charlottesville. I think that's very important. Then I have a couple of VACO commercials. Those of us that are going to the summer summit for VACO, it is in Charlottesville. It was planned a long time ago before this recent event happened. But one of the interesting things we've been able to pull together is, we are going to have the two candidates for governor, Ralph Northerman and Ed Gillespie there, to give us their take on, you know, what they, what they would do as governor, but more importantly, how they would support localities. We also are going to have the two candidates for lieutenant governor, Joe Vogel and Justin Fairfax there, and they will do the same thing. And there is going to be a time where our executive director, Dean Lynch, asks questions, and I imagine those will be pointed to locality issues. So, I feel very fortunate that we were able to get all four in the same place at the same time, in front of a large number of local elected officials, because they need to hear our voices. The second thing, and if you haven't registered yet, please do, if you, if you would like to come. And then, the second thing is, our region, you know, VACO is divided, the state into regions, our region is region 10. And so, I've been attending as VACO president, all the different regional meetings. So, our regional meeting is going to be September 7th, is going to be in Appomattox, and it's going to be from 6 till 8. And what happens at these meetings is many supervisors from the different localities